Welcome, everybody, to today's Raleigh City Council Work Session. Our first topic is an update on the Parks and Transportation Bond projects. We'll be hearing from Stephen Bentley and Kenneth Ritchie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kenneth Ritchie, Roadway Design and Construction Manager with the Engineering Services Department, here to provide an update on the transportation bond. So, the agenda for our presentation, we'll do an overview of the bonds and some of the relationships between Engineering Services and Transportation. We will do an update on projects, and then we will do an overview of the program areas. So, the projects that are laid out in the transportation bonds originate from the comprehensive plan, resident council request, and staff. This holds for both the identified projects, as well as the programmatic areas where a number of projects come out of during the course of the bond period. Projects are scored based on safety, congestion, transit, like Pead demand, and economic development. The current packages that we are working through, City Council reviewed and approved project priorities in 2011, which was approximately forty million, 2013, seventy-five million, and 2017, two-hundred-and-six-point-seven million. These projects are funded, and allocations reviewed annually through the CIP Budget Review Process, and the typical allocation appropriation timeline is five years from the approval of the bond referendum. So, for the FY seventeen, it would have, the first appropriation would have been the FY eighteen fiscal year with a planned final appropriation and FY twenty-two. So, as I alluded to in the introduction, there is a departmental relationship with regards to delivery of the transportation projects between the Raleigh Department of Transportation and Engineering Services. The Raleigh Department of Transportation works to plan and identify projects, prioritize those projects, work through the budget planning, and really kind of engages a design consultant throughout the delivery process. For Engineering Services, specifically the Roadway Design and Construction Division, we're responsible for design management, oversight of our design consultants, acquisition oversight, and coordination with our real estate group on acquiring the property necessary to construct those projects. We will manage our, manage the low bid contractor through the construction process, and then we will accept the public infrastructure at the end of that process. So, we're going to talk a little bit about a typical project timeline. And just to clarify, this project timeline is more aligned with our corridor roadway projects, so the larger corridor roadway projects, which has a typical timeline of about twenty-four months, and that's from the time that the design consultant is selected to the time that notice to proceed is issued. There are variables within the process that can impact that delivery timeline one way or the other, but certainly this is what the average project timeline is. One thing to note is during, one of the key aspects of our project delivery is public engagement, and during the course of our corridor roadway projects, we have four identified engagement milestones. We do one at pre-design. We do one early in design, where we're kind of taking, taking design concepts to the public to get some more feedback as we work through that process. Advanced design, which is the late-stage design process, that engagement is intended to really kind of show the public what kind of our final design looks like, and a lot of times is the kickoff for our real estate engagement, formal real estate engagement in terms of acquisition. And then, once the award, the construction bid has been awarded, we do a pre-construction meeting with the public and the contractor to talk through what they can expect during construction. One thing I'd like to highlight during this process, and it's very much a concurrent process that we've been working through with the Real Estate Department, is traditionally real estate gets engaged from a formal standpoint after our sixty-five percent public engagement and our project update presentation to council. One thing with, that was a project for staff in both real estate and roadway design and construction, was looking at how we could streamline this process, and what's been piloted is kind of an early real estate engagement at the twenty-five or the early design stage, to introduce the corridor residents and stakeholders to the real estate team and really start that connection and start those conversations early, hoping that that helps during the formal negotiations, once we get past that late-stage design. And certainly, we are, we're continuing to work with our internal and external partners, try and find ways that we can streamline the process more, and hopefully decrease this timeline to the extent possible. So, as I alluded to, there are some variables that can, can impact the timeline, and what we call, we kind of call these our timeline drivers. Public engagement and feedback. Public engagement is a very critical part of the project delivery process, but certainly everybody has their opinions, and we want to hear those, but certainly they, depending on how often we're having to engage and depending on how that impacts the design, that can have an impact on our, our delivery schedule. Another piece is supplemental funding. This is typically, we see this through grant funding. Currently, we have a number of grant projects, which will be identified as we go through the projects, that are in a bit of a hold right now through, because a lot of our grant, federal grant funding comes through NC DOT, and given that their financial situation, they have been in a holding pattern on giving any authorizations for funding release or entering into any contracts that would have them responsible for any amount of money coming to the municipalities. Another piece is property acquisition. As we go through, and certainly with some of these larger projects, more properties, it can take more time to, to work through the property acquisition process. And then, too, agency coordination. There's a number of permitting agencies that we work with that sometimes we do run into challenges with. We work closely with DOT, closely with DEQ, and we coordinate with them on a regular basis, but certainly requirements that they may have could impact this one bubble, and certainly it could impact some of these other bubbles as well, given the NC DOT supplemental funding and other requirements that we may see. But certainly, these are some of the variables that can impact our delivery timeline. So, now, we'll kind of go through a list of the projects and kind of show projects that are completed, those in construction, those that are in kind of the late-stage design and property acquisition, and those that are really early on in design. So, this is a list of the completed projects from the 2011, 2013, and 2017 bonds. Certainly, some that are very notable, and we'll get to some pictures of some of the completed projects here in a minute, but certainly one to highlight, Hillsborough Street Phase Two. I don't have a picture of that on the next slide, we've got that photo on the, the cover slide of this presentation, but certainly the Sandy Forks, the Buck Jones Road project, and then the Blunt-Person Corridor Planning, the Phase One project that just recently finished up on Blunt and Person Street. So, these are just some pictures depicting those projects. The Blunt-Person Corridor Phase One project established two travel lanes and went to instituted buffered bike lanes along Person and Blunt Streets through downtown. The Sandy Forks Road project, in your bottom-left corner, was a, was a milestone project for the city. That is a Green Road certified project. As you can see in the picture, the median areas along this project are being utilized for stormwater mitigation. And then, certainly, the next project on the right is the Buck Jones Road project, highlighted by the roundabout depicted here in the picture. The next group of projects are those that we have in construction, or those that are at construction bid. These are highlighted, the Pleasant Valley Road project, which we anticipate will be finishing up here shortly, New Hope Church Road, Yonkers Road, Tryon Road Part C. Those four projects are actively in construction today. The Gorman Street Cycle Track Connector Project is at construction bid. That is a grant-funded project that has been stagnated from a standpoint of being able to get construction authorization, but we are continuing to work with Campo and with the Department of Transportation to try and move that one forward. And then, the Pool Road Widening, which is actually advertised for bid as we speak. Looking at the anticipated schedules and timelines, as you can see, the top four projects are actively under construction, with anticipation that those will be completed between now and the, the early winter of 2022. And then, the Gorman Street Cycle Tracks and the Pool Road projects, the Cycle Track, we anticipate that being a nine-to-twelve-month project, so we anticipate with getting that authorization released, to hope to finish that in the spring of 2021. And with Pool Road, we're hoping to start construction early winter 2021, with an anticipated completion of the early winter 2023. The biggest group of projects we have currently are those that are in advanced design and property acquisition. These include Jaguar Park Drive. Those were funds that were re-appropriated from the former Tryon Road Part D project to do a multi-use path along Jaguar Park Drive from Athens Drive down to the Thomas Crowder Woodland Center. The Lumley West Gate Corridor Improvements Project, the Oberlin Road Streetscape Project, the Blue Ridge Road Widening Project, the Blue Ridge Road Bridge Improvements, that includes a pedestrian bridge overweight Avenue, that is also a grant-funded project, which is somewhat slowed because of the, the current financial challenges with NC DOT. The Atlantic Avenue Widening Project, Rosen Garden Alley, Old Lake Forest Road and Dixie Forest Road, that is a project that more, just very recently was approved for grant funding, and so we are working through NC DOT right now for the municipal agreement associated with that one. The Barwell Road Widening Project, and then Carolina Pines Avenue. As you can see, these projects are continuing to make their way through the process with an anticipation that we will see the delivery of these between the summer of 2020, spring, summer 2021, and the fall of 2023. Most notably, the Carolina Pines Avenue Project, which we are continuing to coordinate with some of our external agency stakeholders on to finalize that design, and anticipate that that project will be in front of you in the next couple of months for an update presentation. And then, the Barwell Road Project, which we will be presenting an update on that project at the October sixth meeting. And then, for the final groups of projects, we've got those that are early in design, which are Marsh Creek and Traywick Road, the Blunt-Person Two-Way Conversion, Six Forks Road Corridor, and the West Street South Extension. Modified delivery, this is the New Bern Avenue Improvements. This is a pedestrian improvements project that has been combined with the New Bern BRT project. So, those elements will still be, be constructed, they will just be done as part of the New Bern BRT. And then, Rock Quarry Road A, which is being delivered by NC DOT during their I-40 project. And then, the last two projects are projects that were most recently deferred as part of the FY twenty-one budget, the Peace Street West Project and the Allezable Road B Project. So, with these projects, we are anticipating to see these projects completed in the spring, summer of 2024. So, now, we'll do a high-level overview of the programs. So, highlighted on this chart are a number of, of program areas that have been funded through the transportation bonds. I do want to make note of the streetscapes, the major corridor, small area implementation, the neighborhood corridor, small area implementation, and the neighborhood traffic management programs. There will be more information, and those areas will be highlighted during the report and recommendation of the city manager later on this afternoon. But certainly, we are early on into trying to deliver a lot of these projects. There are some of these areas that we don't have as much control over with regards to the NC DOT prioritization, given some of their challenges currently, and the public-private partnerships, which are really dependent upon our, our private partners coming to us and really looking at ways that we can expand our infrastructure system. Two program areas that I want to highlight in some detail are going to be the corridor sidewalk improvements and the neighborhood sidewalk petitions. So, the corridor sidewalk projects, these are identified sidewalk projects along some of our major corridors, where we're really trying to enhance our pedestrian connectivity. We continue to work through these, and with the schedule you see below, this should expend most, if not all, of the corridor sidewalk money between now and the, the fall of 2022. And then, our petition sidewalk program, these are sidewalks that come to us through petition from the neighborhoods, from residents. We've got two that are currently under construction, and then we have about half of these that are slated, scheduled for final design and construction. I, I do want to make mention of the grouping at the bottom that are listed as pending. That is the backlog that we had discussed during the budget process. We have gone through and we're working through getting final survey on all of those projects, and then going to look at trying to work through those. With the available budget we have now, we're anticipating that we should be able to get through about half of those projects, but certainly there will be some that will need to find future funding in order to be able to deliver. So, that is all I have for the formal presentation. Are there any questions?
Counselor Buffkin, then Counselor Cox.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ritchie, for your presentation. Clearly, got a lot of work to do and not enough resources to do it. And a particular concern of mine is something that I think is very frustrating to our, to the public in this community, is how long it takes road projects to get done. So, you know, when watching your presentation, the first question that comes to mind is, if we were looking to save time in the project cycle, where, where could we find some savings of time?
So, we are continuing to identify some of those areas with our internal and external stakeholders. We're trying to look at opportunities for concurrent processing, where we can try and get pieces of the puzzle started earlier in the process and be able to allow them to move forward with that. One of those pieces is the real estate acquisition process, so that is one that we've started identifying with real estate, and we're continuing those conversations to see how we, can we get them engaged earlier to be able to allow that process to play out while we're still trying to finalize design so that we don't have, because certainly with the number of properties that we see on some of these projects, it can take a significant amount of time to work through the acquisition process, so the earlier we can get them engaged, the better. So, that's one particular area we're looking at. We're also trying to go through milestone by milestone and see, hey, are there areas where we can potentially move some of these to help expedite that process?
Great. If I may, just a brief follow-up question.
Yes.
So, I, I asked Mr. Lamb last week, and, and I'll suggest again today that the Parks Department did some very valuable work a few years ago related to pedestrian connections between neighborhoods and parks, eliminating barriers that force people to walk a long way out of the way to get to parks. I didn't see any of that work reflected in your presentation, and so I'm going to encourage again that transportation and Parks Departments work together on these issues. I think there's a lot of synergy, and there'll be a lot of value in sharing that information, which is just to come in feedback.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Buffkin. Counselor Cox, and then Counselor Melton.
Yes, my questions are along the same lines as Counselor Buffkin's about the delays. I'm familiar, because it's in my district, Traywick and Marsh Creek was started at least a year ago, and according to the timeline, it looks like it won't be completed until at least 2004, so we're looking at a five-to-six-year timeframe for that project. So, and you mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that the average is twenty-four months. So, I was wondering if we could get an update on each of our projects about what we think the timeline will be? And then, I'd like to have some further discussion, because it does seem like the timelines are lengthening, and are we resource constrained? I know over the years, we've gone from forty million and gradually have increased to now two-hundred, over two-hundred million dollars for our transportation bond, and I'm wondering, even though the money is there, to be able to do more projects and bigger projects, do we have enough resources in order to be able to keep those timelines down to twenty-four months for each of our projects? And I think to get started, we have to identify what the timelines are for each of our projects and present that information. So, Mr. Manager, could that be something that we could get for each of the projects, is what the estimated timelines will be for each of our projects?
Certainly, Mr. Cox. Now, some of that information is in the presentation and report attached that's here, so I guess one question, just to help me understand and clarify, are you looking for additional information other than the project schedules that are presented today on the timeline?
Well, if it could be highlighted, what the estimated number of months from beginning and for each of our projects is in, in one table, that would be nice.
Okay. Well, yeah, we can certainly do that.
And the last question is, do we need more resources in order to manage this project?
So, this is the discussion about project timelines and speed is something that has obviously been of some concern to not only the council, but the citizens as well, whenever you start talking about bond referendum and bond particular projects. Oh, what I, what I would say is that there are a variety of, of things that the council and the staff could change in terms of the approach. Resources is certainly one of them. In other words, if you have more staff, whether it's project managers, or real estate people, more contracts that are procurement, getting the, the contracts in place, you can speed it up. Two of the most significant pieces of time, whether it's transportation or parks, are, is the engagement associated with the design and the real estate acquisition process. There's not a whole lot more you can gain related to when the engineers are, and the architects are actually designing the projects, but the getting agreement on the scope of the project and what the design looked like is often where we have the most variability of time, as well as the real estate acquisition project, process. There's a trade-off there, though, that the council may or may not, there, there's a trade-off the council may not wish to make, but we could certainly bring options as it relates to that. The other is, in terms of resources, yes, with more staff, in many cases, we can accelerate some of these projects, but there is, there's a lot going on with a lot of these projects, and that could make a some difference. Now, I, I couldn't tell you quantif, in a quantified way, how much time gain you would have, but there's a trade-off to making the projects go faster, meaning less redesign, less changes, more connotations, that sort of thing. That's where the biggest amount of time comes in.
I mean, it seems like easement acquisition is dependent upon design, because until you do the design, you don't know where you need your easement. So, it seems to me that maybe if we had more resources for design, that could actually speed, speed the whole process up. Not only do we get more resources to do more design for all our projects, but then that would also help with easement acquisition.
That, to, Mr. Cox, to your point, or Counselor Cox, to your point, that certainly would help, and, and if we had more staff working on more projects simultaneously, that would accelerate it. Again, where a lot of the time comes in, though, is the interaction back and forth with groups or neighborhoods or residences on design and the associated real estate. So, I'll just say, in other cities, that process may be much shorter than what we do. In other words, we, we don't try to work it out as long. If you, if you move towards a decision quicker on design and real estate, you can speed up the project, but often it makes citizens more upset. I'm just, I'll just put it that way. And now, I'm not saying that's the solution to the problem you're addressing, but the, the greatest variability in many of these projects has to do with trying to reach agreement with the property owners and residents that are impacted by the projects, or stakeholders who have an interest in the design, that, that they want to impact and influence what the project looks like, and we embrace that. Now, how, how far we go down that path, I think, often is what drives a lot of these project scheduling. And we, and it's also gotten, these projects have gotten more expensive.
Well, with Traywick, Marsh Creek in particular, I mean, we completed the citizen, a lot of the citizen engagement piece, I think all of it, if I'm not mistaken, several months ago, and so now we're looking at another four or five years before we complete that project, that's puzzling to me.
Well, if you'd like, we could have another session that talks about how long it takes for each step of the, it's like today, it's a, it's a demonstration at a summary level, like the, again, the tables and, and the PowerPoints shows you each step and how, how long it takes. We could do a, we could do something that tries to explain more about how the staff does the work to build the project, you know, the amount of design work, the amount of engineering, getting the permits, you know, that's, that's a lot of those pieces. A lot of times, citizens don't know the background of what it takes to actually go and get all the the things put in place to actually build a project. And particularly for some of these road projects, it can be quite complicated. But I, let me just say, I very much appreciate and understand the response from both the council and the community that want these projects built faster. And we can build them faster, but there are trade-offs.
Okay.
Counselor Melton was next.
Yeah, just real quick with regarding the petition program for our sidewalks, are we looking at that separately? Or can we? In my opinion, I think we got to do something differently there because it seems like it's not a sustainable program. My preference would be to clear out the backlog of everyone who's been promised a sidewalk through the petition program and then figure out how we want to handle it moving forward. So that would mean finding the funds to pay for the projects that have already been approved and then figure out how we want to do it in the future. It seems like if we're going to be pivoting towards a vision zero plan and the city's going to be putting even more time and attention to building, you know, dense, walkable communities, that perhaps we eliminate the petition program in the city, takes the lead on identifying corridors for sidewalks and other right-of-way improvements. So I don't know if we can pull that, look at it separately or if it's already being done, but I just wanted to flag that for attention.
Counselor Buffkin, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So quick question following up on the conversation we were just having. When we get into the public engagement phase, is there a time limit on how long that lasts as, as a typical matter? Is it, is it just open-ended and public engagement concludes when we feel like we've gotten as close to consensus as possible?
So currently, under the, the environment realm with COVID, our public engagement is gone virtual. And so certainly with those opportunities, we kind of have those as two to three-week periods to really solicit that feedback. But certainly we do get feedback from the public throughout the entirety of the design phase, but we do have those formalized periods at each of those milestones where we really, that becomes our really kind of pinpoint period to get that feedback. But certainly we're getting feedback throughout the entirety of the process from individual residents and stakeholders.
Okay. Well, may, maybe then, Mr. Manager, as a follow-up item, if, if y'all could potentially identify some procedures we could put in place to institute deadlines on, on some of the, particularly the public engagement part, where it, it seems like we've got the greatest opportunity to save time. It seems to me that a deadline would be helpful to focus the conversation.
Yeah, if I could, Counselor Buffkin, what I would suggest is if we can certainly do that, I think you would want to consider that differently for transportation versus parks. I think, you know, obviously parks has an adopted T5 engagement policy, whereas the transportation version is a little bit more straightforward. So straightforward, meaning they held the public citizen in meetings and then they generally try to proceed. So there's a big difference in those two programs from engagement procedure. So if the council wanted us to bring back a proposed, proposed deadline changes, we could certainly do that. Again, that would be up to the councils who wanted to put that restriction on the process.
I have a suggestion. We take up this issue in the transportation committee, just have them look at the process and procedure and have a further discussion on this. City manager? Could we send this to committee, transportation committee, to have further discussion on what the procedures, if any, changes are needed? I, I think also, one thing we have to consider is if we hire more staff, that means a tax increase. And that's often part of what we look at when we do a bond is just how much are, is the public willing to pay for this? So it, there's a trade-off there. And Counselor Melton, I'd be very cautious about eliminating the petition process. Sometimes these sidewalk petitions can get very contentious. And I would just say that that's something you, again, if you talk about this topic in the transportation committee, talk about it holistically. And I'm waiting for Mayor Protam, who chairs the transportation committee. I just volunteered you.
I mean, we, we can talk about it. I mean, I think we, you know, just to move this along because we have another presentation for Parks and Rec, and their timeframe is double what transportation is, in a sense. So, you know, based on the presentation I saw, and I look for more details, but we can talk about it. I just want us to be careful because words matter. And when we start talking about deadlines and, and looking at public engagement, we really have to be careful on how we discuss that and talk about it. I, I think we need to look at the system holistically and go from there. But that's, I mean, we can discuss it as far as transportation. I'm not sure where else we can cut fat other than adding more staff, but we look forward to that conversation at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Melton, you're not going to get to eat lunch, Counselor Melton.
No, I just want to be clear that, because I know we have to be very concise with what we're sending to committee, so, and I didn't mean to offend anybody with my comments about the petition. I am the B-PAC liaison, so it's something that I think we do need to be looking at. I just don't think it's a sustainable program. I don't want to be promising people things that we can't follow through on. And so if we can make sure that that piece of it is included in what we're referring to committee, I do agree we can look at it holistically.
Yes, that's what I asked. Okay. Are you good with that? Mayor Protam? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, Kenneth. I guess the conversation will continue. And now we'll have Stephen Bentley come up to talk about the parts, Parks update.
My name is Stephen Bentley, one of the Assistant Directors for the Raleigh Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department. My agenda is similar to the prior transportation bond update, which includes an overview of the 2014 bond, a summary level of schedules for specific, and then we go into specific projects. The bond from 2014 was approved by voters in November of 2014. Funds were then appropriated in their first year of July of 2015 over a five-year period. Our last allocation was approved by the council last July, which is fiscal year 2020. The way we program our funds over the five-year period is we fund planning, then design, and then construction, and we sequence them over multiple years. The summary you see for FY 2016 through FY 2020 is like a bell curve. So a lot of planning and design, peak construction, and then taper off in the, in the years that follow. What impacts our rollout is staffing levels, projects that are more urgent related to safety or council priority. And then annually, the council has the ability to adopt and change the CIP rollout or the bond rollout on an annual basis. For the Parks and Recreation Bond, we actually have single-site projects and then multiple-site projects. Although it's not noted on this slide, the 2014 Parks and Recreation Bond had over half of the $91.7 million was related to capital maintenance and not a lot of new construction. So timeline, similar to discussion you had at the previous presentation, the life of the planning and design timeline for a Parks project is approximately three years. That includes approximately a year to 18 months for a master plan. If projects don't need a master plan, we look, depending on size and complexity of the design project, we look to about a, a year to 18 months of design, which still requires public input for our policy and council approval. So if we were to summarize, we go from master plan, which is approved by board and council, into schematic design, which has public input to the park board, then to council, and then we go into construction documentation and permitting and bidding. Acknowledging that this project, or this slide is very busy, we do have this slide breaking up, broken up over multiple slides in the coming presentation. The important information is along the left-hand side of the slide. We have about 30 projects and programs within the 2014 bond. That does not include Moore Square, which is, was a two-thirds bond. The two-thirds bond funds were approved in 2014, but it was not a part of the 2014 referendum. So we had approximately 70 projects within the 2014 bond. And currently, we're, we have completed about 60% of them, which I'll cover in coming slides. 20% are in construction and 20% are in planning and design. So just highlighting some projects that we have recently completed over the last year to 18 months. Ralph Campbell Neighborhood Center, East Gate Neighborhood Center, Kiwanis Park, Sassafras Playground, improvements to Lake Lynn, Mary Bell Park, I mentioned Moore Square, and significant improvements to the Walnut Creek Athletic Complex. These are just some further images of some of those completed projects. Projects that we currently have under construction, some significant projects like John Chavis Memorial Park, which is scheduled to be, be completed in late spring of 2020. Pullan Art Center, which has a similar schedule, late spring 20, I'm sorry, 2021 for John Chavis and for Pullan Arts. Riverbank Construction, which we hope to have opened up late fall, if not early this winter, so it'll be completed later this year. And one of our most popular walking locations, we're replacing a comfort station at Shelley Lake. Brentwood Park, which I have a, a slide that will be after this one to go into a little bit more detail, will be bidding late next week. One of our greenway projects is similar to a transportation project. The Crabtree Creek West connection to Umstead is currently on hold as a result of the NC DOT funding challenges. So we're working with our Engineering Services Department, Campo, and NC DOT so that project can be released, but it is, it has completed design. We're currently in the phase of design for significant improvements at Baileywick Park, which would be our first covered play courts and performance area. We have completed designs nearly at Lake Lynn Community Center. However, we do not have enough construction funding, so that project will be recommended to go to the next bond referendum. And then we have multiple greenway projects currently in design. We have a gap near Lassiter Mill Dam that we will be making improvements to along the Crabtree Creek Greenway, Tretton Road, multi-use path, as well as a significant sports lighting package. A lot of our outdoor sports lighting dates back 30 years and we're making improvements and efficiencies to our sports lighting. And then we have three different projects that we're partnering with at Walnut Creek Wetland Park, a project the city is leading, a project we're partnering with, with the Conservation Fund, and a project we're partnering with for Partners for Environmental Justice. So it's a boardwalk, a play area, and then improve access along Bailey Drive. Each of those are in various states of design. Oh, Brentwood Park, at the last council meeting, Councilmember Cox asked for some specific details related to the, the timeline and schedule for Brentwood Park improvements. The project was launched in, excuse me, in late 2016. The master plan met schedule, was completed in early 2018. Design was initiated in the fall or, yeah, fall of 2018. We then got schematic design approval by the council in late 2018, and then construction funding became available last summer. We did see delays this past spring, about three months of delays, and they were related to some of our permitting, or specifically our federal permitting. But we're scheduled to bid this project with our construction management and engineering services partner by the end of next week. Some of the things we've looked at this project, we could have combined and negotiated some of our contracts before budget was available. We looked at how can we be more efficient in our public engagement process, which has been referred to the Parks Board, which will be starting that conversation further with the Parks Board this Thursday. We're also looking at some of the unpredictability aspects of permitting. The permitting related to this project was a federal permit and staff underestimated the time requirement for it. And one of the improvements we're looking at making as a department is more timely communication through the city manager's office to council in the event there are a delay, so that the council can inform constituents, constituents, along with the Parks Department, letting neighborhood and communities know that there will be some delays. So like transportation, we have programmatic projects or like bucket-type projects. We have a number of projects we have completed related to building systems at Raleigh Little Theater. We have made a lot of improvements at our historic cemeteries, both Mount Hope and City Cemetery. Part of our bond package had a lot of improvements related to ADA compliance, both at Walnut Creek and Lions Park. We also have done quite a bit of improvements to our aquatic facilities, which, most of which date back to the mid-'80s. Pullan Aquatics Center, Biltmore Hills Pool, Ridge Road Pool, and I mentioned Lions and Mount Hope. Other programmatic improvements that we have looked at in this bond referendum and completed is at some of our historic sites. We've completed some work at Mordeke. We've initiated our in-design work right now for improvements at the Pope House. We've replaced and built new playgrounds at Optimist, North Hills, Junius Sorals, Kingwood Forest, and JC. We have quite a few greenway projects that we have initiated and completed. Those are both retaining walls, boardwalk replacements, paving. We also, as Councilmember Buffkin referenced, we have a, a program called our Community Connections Program, where we're, we're building that last, we'll say, several hundred feet of sidewalk to connect parks to the nearest neighborhood. Some of those locations include Lake Lynn, Peach Road, Barwell Road, and some connections along Crabtree Creek. Land acquisition, there was $10 million in the, in the 2014 bond related to land acquisition. Currently, we have a balance of about 5.5 million. We have acquired over the last four years just south of about 200 acres. It's really based on four projects. We acquired a significant, we'll, we'll consider a regional park in southeast Raleigh, south of Barwell Road called Pearl Road. We added 33 acres to Marsh Creek. Recently, we began and got authorization from the council for two different property acquisitions, adding further acreage to Brentwood and as well as adding additional acreage to Wooton Meadow. Our primary focus for our land acquisition is to increase access, and that's walkable access or 10-minute walking access, really focusing on vulnerable communities. And we're using a lot of the Wake County data to help drive our thinking on providing walkable and transit-located access to those individuals that need it the most. We're also looking at ways in which we can acquire and protect significant ecological and cultural sites around the city. Furthermore, anytime we can, we try to partner with our other departments across the city. One thing I did want to highlight is that we've been very successful at getting some grants, both federal and state grants. We have federal grants associated with John Chavis and Crabtree Creek West. We have a state grant for Walnut Creek. And staff in our administration works really hard on working with philanthropic donors for some of our park projects, whether that be the new partnership with the Carolina Panthers. The Kiwanis Club has donated several hundred thousand dollars to Kiwanis Park. Raleigh Little Theater has come forward and matched funds, and the developer at Riverbank actually paid for the master plan process. We also received matching grants through some playground makers and manufacturers. In addition to our bond program, I just want to highlight that we've had some great accomplishments in our annual CIP. in our annual CIP, Greenway Connections, both at Walnut Creek and Trail Wood, the Neuse River Connector. We've done community center and HVAC improvements at Biltmore Lyons and Millbrook. Recently, we partnered with the Stormwater Division of Engineering Services on some green infrastructure at the Raleigh Rose Garden. We've also replaced some of our older comfort stations. And everybody's favorite is we've actually built three dog parks in the last five years. And we have a long list of field and tennis courts improvements that we've made in the last three or four years related to our annual cash CIP. Some of the things I wanted to share with council today is we do have a few projects that designs are complete but lack construction funding. One is the Biltmore Tennis Center project. Another is the Laurel Hills Community Center renovation. And in the 2014 bond, we actually only programmed planning and environmental analysis funding for the Devera Meadows site located along Weston P Street. Currently, we have completed the Phase 1 and Phase 2 and are scoping the planning process for the passive park development. Project timeline improvements, we're currently working with the Park Board, as I mentioned, on our P5 policy. How can we become more efficient and effective in our engagement with our community? We're working closely with the Planning Department on the proposed UDO text changes. And we're in a constant state of looking how we can improve our project delivery process, whether that be working with the Planning Department, Engineering Services, NC DOT, or other permitting agencies that we work with. And with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Counselor, wait a minute. Okay, Mayor Protam Branch.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just want to draw one line of clarification around the Chavis Park improvement. That is for Phase 1. I don't want anyone to think that that is for all of the work for Chavis Park. That's just Phase 1. And one thing, the other actual statement I want to make is, a lot of times we have master plans, and I understand your timeline for master plans and going forward and finally going to bid to notice. But I think also making sure that we communicate clearly that sometimes these master's plans are still done in phases, that, you know, just because we have a master plan that's holistic, all the work is not done at one time because of funding and resources. So those are just two things I wanted to mention. But thank you overall for that presentation.
Counselor Fort, then Counselor Buffkin.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. I have a question as relates to the community center improvements. Do you maintain a list of facilities that still need either like repairs on the HVAC systems or like, you know, some facilities, I think Method Road does not have air conditioning? Do you maintain a list of all those facilities that still need those improvements? And do you have a timeline of being able to work through those particular projects?
That's a great question. Yes, we do. We work with our community center staff and our Engineering Services Department on those community centers that still lack HVAC. The four locations that currently do, one is Method Road. That was one of the top priorities for the proposed 2020 bond referendum, which was going to do a comprehensive renovation to the entire Method Road campus. It's a historic site, so we have to be conscious about those renovations. The other is Tarborough Road, which also was a top recommendation during the Park Board discussions. Currently, we're looking at interim solutions for Tarborough Road. Our recommendation for the Parks Bond was to actually build an entirely new Tarborough Road Community Center, tear the old one down and build a state-of-the-art center. The other locations that we have include, we have a second gymnasium that we built at Green Road, which still needs HVAC. And then Laurel Hills does not have HVAC. The proposed pathways, we were looking at funding those was both through our annual CIP, which will be challenging, understanding the economic impacts of the city. Our CIP went from 5 million to 1 million this year. And then the bond referendum. So those two funding mechanisms were going to be the way in which we were going to address the last four locations.
Thank you.
Counselor Buffkin.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Protam Branch, and Councilmember Fort for those questions, two important issues raised there. Stephen, thanks for the presentation. This was like watching the last six years of my life go by in 10 minutes. And I still remember really well the day we were at Chavis Park to kick off the bond campaign with the co-chair, then-city council member, Mary Ann Baldwin. It was a good day. It was a successful campaign, and it's gratifying to see a lot of the work that this community has put in and the park staff has put in on these various projects. So we know the job's not done, and you just mentioned two big opportunities coming forward with our bond and our capital improvement budget. I wonder, I guess, Stephen, I'd like to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Ritchie. And, you know, we've got the P5 planning document in front of the Parks Board. And do you see, well, let me say first, I guess, you know, master plans come in lots of different flavors, depending on how big the park is, the nature of the community around it, and how complicated the project is. Do you see opportunities to save time in the park planning process, either at master planning or otherwise? Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember's not sure what's going on with the audio in the chambers. Give us a second.
Did I break it?
Did.
But it also looks like he's on mute.
Well, he went off mute for a second there.
Okay.
He's giving us the timeout sign.
I must have used up all my talking time already.
Someone's sending you a message.
I can take these answers offline and get back to the other council members, or maybe we could get a follow-up written report if that maybe would accommodate our technical difficulties here.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, I'll help briefly, but yeah, why don't we get you back a written response on that? As you may, for the rest of the council members' benefits, as you may recall, let's see. Stephen, are you up?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Well, then, I will hand it back to Stephen Bentley.
Okay. My answer was going to wow you so much and knock the volume out, so same question as you posed to Kenneth. I think Councilmember Buffkin, you were looking to hear about. We are looking at ways in which we can improve project delivery. And I'll say first, with public engagement, the bones of the P5 policy and the values of them, as Mickey Fern said, they're there. But it was very prescriptive. It said you had to do things at certain time. I think what we're looking to achieve with the Parks Board is more flexibility, going and doing things where people work and how you engage the public. The policy told you exactly what to do and did not allow for some time flexibility. So I think we'll gain time, as well as partnering with planning and housing and the Office of Equity and Inclusion, so that there's not planning fatigue in the community. But I think we'll find efficiencies in the public process. The project delivery side, Kenneth alluded to some of the items that we would approach is permitting with our agencies and being better at issue spotting, so we can avoid some of these stalls when we get to a design issue. So it's something that we've worked really hard on the last couple of years, and I think that we'll be able to continuously improve as we move forward.
Do we have any, we have Counselor Knight and then Counselor Cox.
I'll be quick, given the time. Thank you, Stephen, for this presentation. This was very, very helpful. And there's a lot of good work that's going on and will continue to. I just want to give a few updates from you all offline on some specific projects in District D that weren't clear to me from the presentation, if we could just follow up. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Cox.
Yeah, I just want to provide some feedback, Stephen. I'm getting rave reviews about Riverbend Park. People are very excited about it. And I want to thank you for your help in working through all the issues so that we could add the playground to that project and make it into a really nice facility. And I'm very happy to hear that we're moving forward with bid next week on the Brentwood Park. And I just want to thank you for working through all of those issues as well as the rest of the staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, Stephen, thank you very much. Very informative. And I have a question for you offline, so if we could connect. Thank you. Yes, city manager? You're muted.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could, I want to make two quick suggestions from a processing standpoint. One is, these Parks and Transportation Bond updates are intended to be periodic, to go ahead and communicate more about what's going on and give you the opportunity for follow-up and things like that. So these are dynamic, regular updates we're trying to do. So that's the purpose of why we're going to keep putting these on the agenda, to flag where we have issues. But again, district reps, you have follow-up questions that don't really need the whole thing, we're happy to help you with that. So just wanted to put that point out there. The second is, in terms of timing, Mayor, the second item is the Organizational Excellence Strategic Planning Follow-Up. And in your packet, you received a draft proposal of the revisions to the strategic plan focus area for that group, the same as you've done for all the committees, but this just goes to the full council. Stephanie Olson is here and can walk through that, but in the interest of time, perhaps you might want to just see if you have any questions. That way, we could get out sooner, or we could, you know, punt this for another day. This is one of only two that are left. So what I might suggest, Stephanie, instead of going through the presentation, perhaps, Mayor, are there any questions about the draft that we submitted?
I don't see anybody with their hands raised. Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, then I will take it that everybody is on board with the changes that were made.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to recognize Stephanie Olson and the Budget and Management Services staff for coordinating a lot of the work across all of your various committees. And I also wanted to say thank you for the time you're spending on those various focus area plans. The OE, or Organizational Excellence Focus Area, does have a lot of emphasis on things that you have told us that are priorities, such as social equity and engagement. And so that's reflected in the document. So for those that are kind of listening at home, this is a document that's trying to reflect those council priorities. So unless you give us any other direction, and assuming that GNR comes out next week, no pressure, we would then bring back all of them for your consideration at the October 6th council meeting, so that at that point, you can decide whether or not you want to take action and vote for the entire package. But it's really been some great work through the committees chewing on the specifics, and we're just really pleased in your commitment to strategic planning. And I'm really appreciative of the work of Stephanie and her team with all the focus area staff and ACMs and everybody being involved. So I just want to say thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all your hard work on this. We're now going to take a break, and we will reconvene at 1:00 for our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.